Well, I call this meeting to order, and I meant to let Beth do that, because she wanted to use it. So, I'm glad everybody could come today. It's a wonderful, beautiful day outside, and the weather feels really good. So, I know that we're anxious to do our business and then leave. Before we begin on our agenda, I want to show you, I know that most of you read the daily news online, or you purchase the paper, and there's a really good article, Beth, I don't know if you read it, about education and the process of education. I thought it was very appropriate. So, if you haven't had a chance to read it, look online if you don't get the paper and read it. It's very good. And it was nice to have that, and then today we had all of our data. So, I think that process is very important. We'll start on our general business, and the first item is, of course, our meeting schedule. And Steve, I mean, Barry, you talked about this earlier, I believe, so...
Yeah. During our previous pre-board meetings, we discussed bringing this issue up. So, there's a couple of pieces to this. One is the meeting place, and then also the schedule. I think we looked at the March date as being a day that fell on the primary election date, and we need to move. But getting back to the meeting place, the thought there is, we have a facility now over at the Regional Skills Center that has a place that would be suitable for our board meetings. We still have a little bit of work to do in terms of lighting, and cameras, and sound, but we believe that we can be ready for, to begin conducting our meetings there probably in January. So, it would be my recommendation to the board, and some of the reasons for doing this, there's many, but a couple of those would be, we've been having our board meetings at Blue Creek Elementary School for several years now. And as you know, the setup and the tear down, time to do that, and preparation, it does cause a little bit of interruption at that school for them to have their classes and their meeting times there. The other thing, and I'm not an expert on technology, and sound, and lighting, and those things, but one thing I do know is when you are continuously setting things up and tearing it down, and setting it up and tearing it down, it really wears away wires and connectors and instruments that are being used. And we have already seen where we've had to purchase and repair some of the equipment that we've had to set up there. So, and then the other thing about moving would be the amount of time it takes our staff. We have several staff members that have to come in and set up things there at Blue Creek, and it takes a couple of hours, believe it or not. And then to tear it down, it takes a couple of hours. If we make this move, which I hope that we will, that will eliminate a lot of that, and I think it will be more efficient, it'll be better quality. So, my recommendation, Madam Chair, is that, beginning with the January regular board meeting, that we meet over at the North Carolina Regional Skills Center at Burton Park.
I think Dr. Collins is asking for us to approve that, so I'd like to entertain a motion that we have that meeting scheduled, I mean, a meeting moved to Burton Park.
Madam Chair, for a second?
Comments?
For some of us who've been here a long time, this was the meeting room of the school board. Met during the day about 1:00, 2:00. It was moved at night, outgrew it, moved to the Family Ed Center, outgrew it, and found a school. And we used to rotate meetings, moving all that equipment. But certainly in favor of using one of our facilities and support the motion.
Other comments?
Well, I was very vocal when we first started this project about not building a board room up there. We have built a multipurpose room, and it certainly will serve us well if we move our meetings over there now. I don't think that it serves us good to meet at Blue Creek when we have a room that could be dedicated to setting up and not have to tear it down every time. So, the economy and efficiency, I think, will serve us well.
And I'd like to say that's the only large room that Blue Creek Elementary has. There are lots of opportunities for students after school with special events that we might have interrupted over the past few years. So, I think that that does give those elementary students a space, at least some additional time per month, that could be utilized for student use.
I agree. I think it'll be a great place, and I hope, Jeff, I know that they're probably going to need some kind of different, better equipment, I should say, and looking at how you can do that, you know, is your department, so...
One last question. Mr. Hussey, you would certainly nibble about this, but I haven't driven back there much every time. But I know since we've opened up that area, as far as lighting is concerned, it's pretty much extended all the way to the back.
Yeah, the county installed streetlights on Northwest Corner, all the way to the government center, and it's well lit all the way back there. And there's plenty of parking.
Good. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Did you, and have we made, we've not made an official change in that schedule, so it would be appropriate if we could do that.
Okay. Jody, do you remember the date that we were looking at, Chang's Gene, the March meeting two? What date was it?
Well, we had suggested the second Tuesday or the Monday before. So, it would either be, let me tell you exactly the date, just give me just a second. So, your options would be, right now it is on March 3rd, the first Tuesday, that is primary election night. So, the suggestion was either Monday, March 2nd, which would be the day before, or the second Tuesday, which would be Tuesday, March 10th.
Does anybody have a motion they'd like to present on either of those dates?
I'd like to make a motion, but I'd also like to include November 5th in the discussion. March 3rd is the primary election day for next year. November 5th of 2019 is general election day for this year. And I think that, from a personal standpoint and a general standpoint, we shouldn't probably be having board meetings on election day, so that we can afford both the staff, members, and the community to be able to exercise their right to vote. We have a problem typically. So, I would make a motion that we would move the March 3rd meeting to March 10th, and the November 5th meeting to...
So, if we did November, right now it is on November 5th, which is the first Tuesday. The second Tuesday would be November 12th, which is the day after Veterans Day, I believe. Yeah, so that'd be the day after Veterans Day, and based off what I'm looking at, the only conflict. I mean, that's not a conflict, but that's the only, there's no conflict on the 12th.
Well, before we have any discussion, let's get the motion on the table in a second.
I'll make it to November 12th then as well, for moving that date. My second, then.
Okay, discussion?
Jody? The annual school board conference?
I knew you got that. It is the following week. So, the annual conference is the 18th through the 20th. So, it is the following week.
The following week, okay.
Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And those dates will be changed and appropriately distributed to, it'll be March 10th and November 12th.
Actually, March 12th. Is that what you said?
Oh, I thought you said March 10th.
So, it'd be, I'm wrong here.
At least Bob's motion was March 10th.
You're right, March 12th.
Good to go on that. Great. And now, if the state doesn't change those dates, we'll be fine.
That's true.
Next are the contractor bids for Catherine Lake and Stump Sound Area Schools. Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman, and members of the board. Initially, we wanted to come in this morning and present two packages to award bids for construction of two elementary schools. One over at the Stump Sound, over in Stump Sound Township, and one off of Highway 258, 224, next to Catherine Lake. Unfortunately, when we received bids on, when we opened up to receive bids on September 17th, we didn't have enough bidders to come in for, to actually open the bids. So, we had to send the bids back, and we weren't able to open bids at that point in time. I wanted to give you a couple of updates on that process, and where we're going, and how we're moving forward to still meet our timelines and dates. Initially, we put the bid packages went out on August 9th through the 14th. Okay? The date range is because we had some newspapers that couldn't get it out until a later date, but we started putting the bids out on August 9th. And then with the planned opening of September 17th for the bids, the newspapers that we sent out, sent out notification to was the Jacksonville Daily News, the Wilmington Star, the Raleigh News &amp; Observer, created diversity out of Wilmington. And also, we put it on the historically underutilized businesses website, and that's so we could make sure we reach out to all the minority contractors as well, to give them an opportunity to bid. In addition to that, we went to two of the largest construction warehouses where projects are listed for contractors to go out and review. That was the Dodge Data Analytics and I Square Foot Electronic Warehouses. These are electronically, the majority of the contractors go out to these places to actually see which projects are up there to go out to bid, and this is a major thing that we put out there, so we make sure that we can reach, not just local contractors, but regional contractors, state contractors, and we could go nationwide with that by reaching out with Dodge Data Analytics and I Square Foot Electronic Warehouses. So, in this process, notification went out, and as I mentioned, we also sent out to historically underutilized businesses for the state of North Carolina. Bid openings, we had six pre-qualified companies indicate that they were bidding in one or more projects. Those companies were Daniel &amp; Daniels Construction, FBI out of Goldsboro, FBI Construction out of South Carolina, they have two locations, Florence and Conway, JM Thompson was question mark, they weren't sure they were going to bid or not, Montith Construction out of Wilmington and Raleigh, Quater Construction, which is a local company, and TE Davis Construction, which is another local company. These contractors were pre-qualified based on criteria that Pinnacle Architecture put forth, and one of the main things they were looking at is if they had built schools in the past, and in that process, and also do they have the financial capability to build new schools as well? Because they have to put money up front as part of the building process, and also have bonding capacity to make it happen as well. At the bid opening, we had, the way we did the bid opening, we had three different bids to be opened up. The first bid that we were looking at was if a company could do both schools at the same time. Okay? So, in other words, a larger company such like a Daniels &amp; Daniels, we may see some kind of economy of scale if they can do both projects at the same time and get all their subcontractors in and all their resources in at one time, be working on them, and they can, they could sequence the projects, be more effective, and more economy of scale for us, so maybe a cheaper price for that. But not only did we want to make sure that large companies had opportunity to bid on two schools at one time, we wanted to make sure that smaller companies had an opportunity to bid too. So, that's why we opened up two other bid openings, one for Stump Sound Elementary, and one for Catherine Lake Elementary. So, when we opened up the first one for the combined elementary schools, only one bidder put an application in, and that was Daniels &amp; Daniels. Okay? We needed three before we could open bids. So, that bid was not opened. The next bid opening was for Stump Sound Elementary, and we had two bidders in that process. It was Daniels &amp; Daniels and Montith. In that process, we only had two bidders, we need three, we couldn't open the bids. We gave the bids back to them and let them know that we would have to go out and re-advertise. The third bid was for the Catherine Lake Elementary, we had two bidders at that one as well, Daniels &amp; Daniels and Quater Construction. Because if we didn't have three bidders, we sent the packages back and said we wouldn't re-advertise. One of the things, just conversations going back and forth, we do know that construction is tight right now within the region, and some of the things that we were hearing is they were having a hard time coordinating subcontractors, so they could do, subcontractor to one project, they may not be doing another project, and so that created some concern for them. And then some of the smaller companies didn't have the bonding capacity to bid on more than one school. So, that's one of the things we were concerned about. So, because we couldn't open up the bid package on September 17th, we had a concern that we weren't going to meet the LGC requirements, the county wasn't going to meet the LGC requirements to have bid numbers in place to get approval for bonding for the schools. The LGC is going out, they're having a meeting October 1st with the LGC, and so after conversations with the county, the LGC, and also with our purchasing department and legal, we decided that we were going to go out and rebid and open up bids on October 26th at 10:00 a.m. We're still going to look at three different bid packages, one for combined schools.
October or September?
I'm sorry, September 26th. My apologies. September 26th. And so, we're looking at combined bid for large companies, they would like to look at that, and then also individual bids for each school. Once that's done, we'll get a certified bid tab sheet from the architect, and that information could be provided to the LGC, the county, and the LGC while we go through, and evaluate the bids, and determine if we can take any, accept any of the alternates, and/or if we have to do any value engineering to meet the pricing that the county's going to provide for us. All this has been done through, following state statute 143-129, and also Board Policy 6430. And at this time, if you have any questions, I'll be willing to answer them.
Floor's open for questions.
Do we, do we need to extend the bidding process timeline in order to garner more contractors to bid on these things? Are we, otherwise, are we making our bid timeline so short that we might be getting contractors that could bid if they had more time to put stuff together?
Talking with Pinnacle Architecture, and historically how we've done it, we've given five to six weeks notification, and that's usually adequate time for them to put the projects together.
Should we be separating the bids? So, in other words, we should, you know, should we be bidding the Catherine Lake school, wait a day, bid the Stump Sound school? I understand that there may be problems if you're bidding them as a joint project, but if a contractor bid on one and was not the lowest bid, perhaps they would sharpen their pencil when they went to submit their bid for the second.
Submit to the second one. And that's one of the things that we had looked at and had a lot of conversation on. One of the things that we were concerned about, though, is because we had to have the certified bid tabs to the county to go to the LGC on October 1st. And so, by, let's say if we did one bid one day, and then two days later did another bid, then we would exceed the timeline for get the information to the LGC. So, that's why we're continuing to use the one date. One of the things to note is when we go out for a bid opening this next time, because it's the second pass, we can accept, we can open bids with just two bidders, or one bidder if needed.
You don't have to have three.
We don't have to have three.
So, in my experience, what contractors will do, they'll show up and see what other contractors are in the room, and they may have more than one envelope with them. So, based on who else is bidding, and what they perceive to be the possible competition, they have in their hand maybe a higher bid, a medium bid, a low bid, and they will pick which envelope to turn in. If you cannot move the date, can you move the time on the same date? Have one at 8:00 a.m. and have one at 4:00 p.m.?
We can do that. What we did, the last go around on September 17th, we did have the bids at separate times. So, we had one at 2:00, one at 3:00, and one at 4:00, so they could come back and look at it. And it didn't seem like it made any difference for them. There was just certain contractors that wanted to bid on certain projects.
Okay. I like the idea of the economy of scale. I like the fact that we had Daniels &amp; Daniels come in to bid a larger project, because we can always save money, because if you have two projects going at the same time, they don't have to hire two different project managers, they can hire one, and there's a lot of other things that they can do in that period of time. I just, I guess maybe I don't fully understand the local economy with that. Is the base taking? They've got huge construction projects. Are they taking the lion's share of the construction work from us right now?
I do know that there are several contractors out there that have been working closely with the base. When we looked at the, when we looked at opening these bids right here, we tried to schedule it so it doesn't conflict with any base openings right now. So, while we can't, while some of the contractors may have already contracted with, for base projects, any projects that are coming up, we didn't want to have a conflict where they were saying, "Well, I can't go to this one, because I'm going to go to the base instead of the school system." So, we kind of set it out so timelines, the school system would be on one day, and then a couple of days later, the contracts for the base would be opened up.
In a meeting that we had recently on base with the commanding general out there, we've learned that they are doing a number of contracts out there, and they're going to allow those contractors to slip their schedule. Otherwise, the money will be appropriated for these building projects, but they won't automatically have to start it in this fiscal year, or next fiscal year. So, this problem isn't going away anytime soon, because that...
Yes, sir.
Pipeline is going to be out there for the base. $50 million or $60 million worth of contracts for a couple of schools, nothing to sneeze at. I just don't understand why, other than the fact that the market is saturated because of the hurricanes and all of the other construction stuff going on, but...
And that's one of the things that just, and while we can't go out and ask the contractors what they were bidding, or, I mean, what their, I mean, exactly what they were looking at as far as pricing and stuff is concerned, we did get a feel from several contractors that the biggest concerns they have were subcontractors. Okay? Having available subcontractors. We have all these general contractors being able to do, willing to bid, but if you can't get the electricians, and you can't get the HVAC people, or the plumbers in place, because they're already out doing other projects, then it makes it very difficult for them to bid and meet a certain timeline that we require, because we can't extend out unless we extend out for another school year.
The Economic Council here, which Bob Warden is part of, expressed some concern over the fact that we weren't going to be using local contractors for several of these projects out on the base, so...
Not, we're not using local contractors, but...
I mean, subs.
But the subcontractors would come from within the county.
And not looking, and haven't seen the bids, I could only speculate, but I would imagine some of these larger contractors, like Daniels &amp; Daniels, and I think FBI Construction's also going to be looking at bidding possibly in the future, they may have subcontractors that are outside the local community as well, because the subs that are in the local community have already been absorbed and are overworked.
What will this do potentially? Because we don't know what is actually in the bids, but what will this do to the contract prices as we go into September 26th, and the contractors know that we have a limited market?
One of the things that we have, we have experience with is, because the Richlands Elementary School is a school that was built just a year ago, and so we have a good feel for what the cost was there. I think since that time, we've looked at also reducing some of the costs by looking at the mechanical systems. We're doing individual units for the classrooms instead of a system-wide, which saves us about, would probably save us several hundred thousand dollars in that process. And also, but that being said, we looked at certain things to save money. Other things, we have no control over. In other words, the tariffs and the price wars going on, back and forth with China and the U.S., I mean, how's that going to impact materials? One thing that we may be seeing more costs associated with it too is the grading. We're just not sure. We just don't know what it's going to be yet. Hopefully, we're going to be able to meet our budgets. Would like to mention that with Richlands Elementary School, it came in under our proposed budget and what the county gave us in the ordinance, and because of that, we were able to add six additional classrooms, increase the size of the building. In the county ordinances, they were still looking at giving us money for a school that was 600 students. These schools are going to be built for right about 700 to 800 students, depending on class size reductions, but we do have an alternate for six additional classrooms, similar to what we had with Richlands Elementary School. So, one of the things that may happen is, if it's awarded, do we, do we exercise, can we take advantage of the alternate or not? That's something we will have to talk to the county as soon as we know what the numbers are. So, we're looking at different ways to do this. Do we have to do some value engineering? We can do some value engineering if we had to, too, looking at different things that we may have to cut back on, but still have a safe, quality school for the students to be in.
Well, let's go back to the main topic of, are we going to extend the bids? Reopen them? That's why we're here, to decide that we're going to do that and support you. And is there anything else that the board would like for Steve to consider as we move forward? This doesn't require any action on our part, but I'm sure he'd like to hear our suggestions.
I think the staff has done a great job in the past, and I think any time you go to open bids, you got your fingers crossed.
We, one thing I would...
And you're hoping for the best.
One thing I would note, too, is even for the hurricane damage that we've seen over the last year, we've had several contracts go out to bid, and then because, because we didn't have enough bidders, we had to go back in and rebid again in that process. So, we've seen some history of this before we got here as well.
Madam Chair, I think it's, I would like to just make clarification on two things. First of all, for the benefit of the audience, the comment that was made earlier about someone not using local contractors, that was made in reference to the base...
Correct.
...general contractors, but local subs would be used. That was not made in reference to Onslow County Schools.
Right.
We are seeking the lowest responsible responsive contractor, and we, I personally, and I imagine my fellow board members feel the same, I would love for money to stay local. I really think that's great, but the local companies just have to sharpen their pencils, and the bids are what the bids are. They're sealed bids. The second thing I would like to clarify is that while Mr. Myers is here making this presentation, staff is not responsible for the bid process. We contract with the architects. Pinnacle Architecture is responsible for running this bid process. So, Mr. Myers is here bearing the news that we did not receive enough bidders, but Mr. Myers is not responsible for contacting the clearing houses, the online clearing houses, and making sure that we have enough bidders notified. Now, of course, no one has control over what companies decide to bid or not to bid, but the prospect of advertisement and trying to drum up business is not the responsibility of Onslow County School staff.
That's right. Thank you. Good luck, Steve.
We are going to make this happen.
That's right. Next is the redistricting discussion, and I know that we've had that on our minds a little bit since Dr. Collins mentioned it at our last board meeting. So, who's going to lead that discussion? Steve?
That's okay with you. Madam Chairwoman, because we are going to make that happen with two new schools opening in August 2021, that's our intent, that's our plan, and we will do everything in our power to make that happen, one of the things we have to start looking at is school attendance zones. We had two new schools, we have to start looking at doing some student realignment. And so, one of the things that, so in your packet in here with the vanilla folder, I've given you a couple of things. I've given you a little PowerPoint presentation right there where we're talking about the two new elementary schools that are opening in August 2021, and that's going to be in the Stump Sound area, in the Highway 24, 258, near Highway 24, 258, near Catherine Lake. Okay? These require new attendance zones, but in that process... Okay, these require new attendance zones. But in that process, when we start looking at changing attendance zones for those two elementary schools, there's going to be a domino effect. It's going to impact several other schools as well. A good example of that would be when we do a new elementary school in Stump Sound, well, that's going to impact Southwest Elementary as well. Because right now, we have several, several students going from the Southwest, Southwest, I mean, we have several, Southwest Elementary has, is overcapacity too. And by adding another school in Sneed's Ferry or in the Stump Sound area, we'll be able to absorb some of that, those students over into the Dixon area as well that are closer to the Dixon schools. Another example is we got Heritage Elementary, that's overcapacity. We've got Carolina Forest, it's overcapacity. We're putting a new school in and by doing some realignment and addressing, addressing the domino, domino effect of moving a student from one school to another, we'll be able to do a better job load balancing of all the schools. Every year, every year, we usually provide you a handout of what our student capacities are. And I think if you remember, we switched from small sheets of paper to large sheets of paper. I hope you guys are all appreciative of that. And I just wanted to show you this, just so you could see it. These numbers right here do not reflect, this is last year's out of capacity charts. We haven't done this year's out of capacity charts because we just started. But these numbers right here reflect, show where the schools that are out of capacity are. And so you can see we have Carolina Forest, we have Heritage Elementary, we have, looks like Swansboro Elementary is out of capacity, Southwest Elementary, Dixon Elementary. These are things that we need to address. And as we build new schools, we have an opportunity to take, to address those as well. So what we need, what we're asking to do is to create a process and a timeline to propose realignment for the schools. We want, we know that twenty twenty-one is the, was, is the major date that we have two new schools coming. So we're proposing that we look at twenty twenty-one as the date for the new student realignment. It could impact several schools. We haven't done the assessment yet. We don't know how much it's going to affect in any one district. And what we, and talking with Dr. Collins, and one of the things that he's, he's been talking to us quite a bit about was that we want to make sure that the community, the parents, the students in the community have sufficient knowledge of the realignments before we do it. In other words, at least a minimum of eighteen months before we go out there. We want to make sure that they know about it so they can make adjustments as needed as well. So right now, what we normally do, okay, board, we ask the board to review the criteria to guide staff. And staff researches the options using a variety of data sources from outside consultants. This includes student population trends, growth data, transportation, facility, facility capacities. And this also requires us to have a third-party contractors in with us as well. ORED is going to be working with us very closely. They've worked with us in the past for our redistricting. And we're going to have some facility, facility, facility planning engineers as well. And a good example of that is Smith Senate. I think everybody's familiar with Ed Gordon as well. He's done this in the past for us and he does a great job helping us understand what our capacities are at each school, even with the new class size reductions coming in. During this time, we're going to create viable options. And then in February of twenty twenty, we'll present to the board these options. And then the board would consider the options, amend them, or direct staff to obtain comment. During February, we'll actually go out and obtain comment, obtain comment from the community. And then we bring the, bring the comments and the recommendations back to the board in March for their, for approval. If that happens, we'll post the student alignment, the new student alignment or attendance zones in March of twenty twenty. That gives us about eighteen months prior to August twenty twenty-one for, for people that have a knowledge of it. The next item that we're looking at, the next sheet is the guiding criteria. Historically, what we've done historically is follow certain criteria for student, student alignment. And that's looking at the crowding at existing schools, the student population growth trends, structural programming requirements, transportation efficiency, geographical relationship with students home, maintaining to the, to the extent possible, communities. We don't want to break up students that live right next to each other. One goes to one school, one goes to the other school. We want to try to keep the communities intact. And consideration of career tech, educational instruction and impact. And if, if, if these communities have been redistricted in the past, we want to keep on bouncing kids every time a new redistricting comes up. We want to try to give them some sort of stability in this process as well. So these are the guiding criteria that we're using, that we've used in the past. And without, and if the board has any other recommendations, we can take a look at that as well. And then the other thing I'd like to mention is in the packet you have, in the back, I have a detailed, or we have a detailed timeline that we're actually looking at, so you're aware of it as well. It's the Onslow County Schools Attendance Zone Review Detailed Timeline. And this goes into a little more detail. I won't go through everything in there, but we've already contracted with ORED to work with our out of capacity as we do every year. And then also what we're going to do to make sure we're as accurate as possible. We want to be as accurate as possible when we do our projections and our forecasts, because wherever we, when we do our realignment, we want to make sure that it's not just for one year, the next year that we, we've got to readdress it again. So we're going to do a land use study. The last time we did a land use study was in two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year. And we're going to go back and do a land use study. They're also going to do planning with population segments. They'll look at each community and say, well, based on, based on historical trends, a planning segment is based on historical trends. I've got a community, I can tell you this house right here has point four six students, children that go to school. So I kind of have a good feeling at any given time, which district or which, which neighborhood, how many students are actually going to be in that, in that neighborhood at any given time. Using these planning segments, ORED will help us develop some additional maps. And in that, and also during this process, we're going to start with some maps. And as more information comes in, we're going to adjust the maps until finally in January, with all the forecasts in place from ORED, we'll have some proposed maps we'd like to give to the board. We'll give to the board in February. And if it's, if it's the board's wish, we'll go ahead and present that to the community or make changes as needed. And at that point in time, we'll go back to the board after we have brought it to the community and receive their input on this as well. We'll go back to the board and make a recommendation to the board in March of twenty twenty.
Steve has presented the, all of the information I think that we need to make a decision about adhering to this timeline and using ORED. So at this time, I'd like to have a motion to approve this.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Yes. And just going to piggyback a little bit into our next item that's on the agenda, Madam Chair. When we attended the meeting last week, we learned that we've got some, lots of people coming in that are going to be connected to the military. And they're going to be a little bit older than that. So whatever we do in our analysis here, I think we probably ought to be looking very heavily on middle schools in the Dixon area as well. They're already overcrowded in that area right now. So when we go forward with that process, I think we need to look at those areas as well. Our focus has been on elementary schools the last several years, and for good reason, because that's where our major growth is. But with bringing another seven hundred troops in that are older than the younger ones that we're currently getting, we're going to end up with kids that are in the middle or high school area probably.
Yes, sir. One of the things to, to take note of, in Dixon Middle School, we are, we have reached capacity at Dixon Middle School right now, but that also includes fifth grade.
That is correct.
So we have approximately a hundred eighty or two hundred students in fifth grade right now. Once that, once they leave, because we have a new school opening in August twenty twenty-one, that'll bring the capacities down to a, to a more manageable level. That doesn't mean that they're not going, that we're not going to see continued growth there. We'll still see continued growth that we need to address going forward.
Steve, looking at this map, at the, at the drawing that you did, we have too many in-city schools that are overcrowded and we've sat on our hiney and not done anything about it. The, the traffic flow at some of these schools is awful. I mean, even at Dixon Elementary, that has a stoplight there, the stoplight hasn't helped very much at all at that intersection, which is outside the camp, outside of the city. What are we doing to address this in-city growth?
With the in-city growth, that's one of the things we will have to look at when we do the student realignment. There are some schools that are under capacity and some schools that are overcapacity. And so we have to look at that. And then at that point in time, we'll address it too. One of the things to take note as well, and I forgot to mention this and I apologize, is that the out of capacity charts that you see right there, these are operational capacity. This doesn't include the mobile classrooms that we already have in place. Okay, when we build and we go forward with the new construction, we always, we always look at the operational capacity, the brick and mortar that we have. Mobiles are for temporary basis and relieve some pressure on a, on a temporary basis. So when we're looking at these overcapacities right now, what we're looking at, if you look at operational capacity, we've put in some mobiles to address some of those situations in the city. As far as the through fare and the kiss and drops, we, we have a problem that we continually to work on each and every time. One of the big, biggest things that we probably have to look at is student realignment to make sure that every school's got, we balance, balance the capacities at each school.
I think that's a workshop in itself, that we should sit around the table with our sleeves rolled up and decide how we're going to address some of these issues, because they're, they're still here. You know, Jeff, they, you, you did a real good job using ORED data. And look, who would have known we would have grown like we did in Carolina Forest area? It's, it's something that we can't just keep on the back burner. We're going to have to have a conversation about it.
Well, as long as we're in discussion on this, I think there's, there's a sheet of paper we were given today about the fifteen-day count. And we're talking about what we're seeing. Here on day fifteen, in two thousand eighteen, we had the post-storm, post-Florence, so there was an impact to our student population. But on day fifteen last year, we were at twenty-six thousand eight fourteen. Day fifteen this year, we're at twenty-six thousand eight twenty-five. And we're not done growing yet. We haven't gotten to the twenty-day mark or beyond. So I believe that, that, you know, knowing that this out of capacity table that we're given is last year's, and we have more kids in school this year than we had last year, you know, the numbers aren't going to get better on this sheet. I think, I appreciate the fact that Mr. Myers, you're talking about mobile classroom units or learning cottages. But, you know, when we're in a hurricane vulnerable area, I, I believe that it would be prudent for us to rely less on learning cottages and more on brick and mortar, or something that'd be a bit more resilient. Madam Chair, I think it's important, and I don't know, this is, this is certainly part of the discussion, because along with growth and redistricting also comes this, this thought of when are we, what are we building next? So on this sheet, we've got the West Central Area Elementary School and Southern Area Elementary School from last year, which we, we have in the works now. But in the CIP, we have another couple of schools that have been identified. Looking at this, as Mr. Williams mentioned, looking at the sheet, you know, red, so red is bad. And we still have a lot of red in elementary schools, but also, you know, we've got Jackson McCombs Middle School, we've got Southwest Middle School. The, the next iteration of CIP needs to be looked at. And for me to make good decisions on redistricting, I would, I would like to know what's coming next in terms of building as well. So it's great that we have a time layout for, for redistricting. But I'd like to know when, when we'll have an opportunity to go through the CIP. You also have two high schools. Among all the high schools, Northside High School and Richlands High School are Northside first, going at over a hundred and five percent overcapacity in twenty twenty-one, Richlands just behind it at twenty-two, twenty-three. And in terms of growth, both where Northside is and Richlands is, I mean, you know, there's, there's new Dunkin' Donuts coming to Richlands. I mean, you know, you know houses will follow. So I, I just believe that, that this is a great discussion on redistricting. But, but if we can also have a timeline on when our board will be engaged in a workshop on CIP and future capital development, that would be good as well.
And I think the board can direct Steve to do that. And he doesn't have anything else on his plate, so.
Well, well, actually, in that process, remember we were talking about ORED's going to do the land use study and also the, the update, the out of capacity tenure projections? That, in January, we will have that information so we can actually start looking at which schools do we need to be looking at next? I think in CIP originally, we looked at a Northwoods Park Middle School expansion, which would help relieve some of the pressure at Combs Middle and also, also Northwoods Park Middle. But then we also have another school that was identified in the CIP. It was never identified which grade level. And I think once we get the joint use, I mean, land use study and also look at the ten-year, ten-year projections coming up out of this, out of this realignment study, then we'll be able to start saying, okay, we need to be putting a new school here or need to put a new school there or what grade levels we are looking at here.
Steve, did you mention, and I just let it slip my mind, when do we expect to get the new ORED study?
We're looking at January timeframe. We're going to be putting, putting spit and polish on it. And then we'll be presenting a draft to you guys in February.
That would be a good time for us to probably sit down and have a more in-depth discussion about all of the other issues that we've mentioned concerning the building. Any other comments or questions for Steve or?
Well, if we get all this information in by March or February, whenever we have that particular discussion with that, and we have the ORED information in, we have a two-year time lapse from the time that we start the construction process until it gets completed. So if, if we're waiting till next year to start that discussion, we already know we have, we're over in these areas. I don't know that we need to wait until January, February, or March next year to have the discussion in those areas that are already red. And I think we're going to have to look at it hard and fast in that. We may have to accelerate some of these programs or add to them before we ever get to ORED. ORED will be the finishing on the, on the project perhaps, or the icing on the cake?
I agree with you on that. I think the sooner the better. But I do think we need to give Steve time to get more accurate data as it applies, not just to the school, but to the building that's around those schools. I mean, I got some data yesterday and it, I was going to share it later, but I'll mention it. Six months ago, there were sixty rental properties that were available, only sixty. Now they're five hundred and twenty-two. Those are going to be filled up with the base people coming in. There are three hundred and sixty-four new construction. The sticks are already in the ground. So there's a lot of building going on that we're going to see. Steve needs to get all that data, I think, before we can sit down and, and have a more in-depth discussion, but that's just me.
I have a question for Steve.
Yes, sir.
Would you be able to get enough data to begin our discussions prior to getting the ORED?
Well, the board of realtors can give you a lot, can't they, Jeff?
Yeah, we can, we can put together some, some information. I don't think it's going to be a finished product that would be, and I would, I would defer to ORED to help us with that process. We, we don't have the, the skill sets, but we can put together some stuff and, and put together a rough draft of what we're looking at. But the finished product, when you're looking at long-term land use studies and planning segments for each of these developments, how many students do they anticipate being in them, that gets a little bit more detailed. So if we want, if we want a, a very accurate picture of where we're looking at going forward in the next five, especially zero to five and five to ten years, then I would probably wait for ORED to help us with that process.
Part of their process is to communicate to all the stakeholders.
That's right. In November.
Campus, you, you name it, everybody.
In November, they're going to be going in and interviewing with. In November, they're going to be going in and interviewing with the utility companies. I think they'll be talking with Mr. Hudson and with several others. They'll be talking with the Realtors, they'll be talking with the base, they'll be talking with municipalities. So, we're going to have interviews across the board to get a better feel for where we see the growth happening in the county. One of the things we have to be careful about is when we build schools, do we build it in the right location?
Right.
Okay? I'd hate to build a school and then a, a thousand student school and all of a sudden find out we only have two hundred students.
Steve, this is in the, do you have a question?
More of a comment. I agree with what both of you have said so far. We need more data. But again, Steve, we're looking at five to ten years in our outlook project that ORED will provide to us. We don't need to have ORED's to look at a red map here.
Right.
And see that we've got areas that we've known about for five or six years already that are already red and have been red for some time.
That's right.
In some of the major municipalities, Carolina Forest is a prime example.
That's brick and mortar.
And we're really going to have to be looking at the city, I think, in order to, to do that.
That's right. And one of, one of the things too, I, I should mention that in the, in the CIP plan or the, the old joint education funding policy for the capital, for the capital projects that we're talking about, West Central Elementary or the Catherine Lake one was scheduled to be opened up in two thousand twenty-one. The county went ahead and pushed that stump sound elementary up two years with funding capacity. So, that was supposed to be opened up in two thousand twenty-three. And then the Northwoods Park Middle Expansion was two thousand twenty-four with a new school in two thousand twenty-five. So, when we do this, the county's already, has a timeline that they're looking at, so we need to make sure that there's some communication going on with the county as well, that we'd like to expedite the process.
Well, the new school in two thousand twenty-five was a middle school, wasn't it?
It was.
Undesignated.
It was undesigned, but, but the thought at the time was a middle school because we were looking at, I remember where we were looking at land at.
That's right.
But, Mr. Williams, to your point, we all live here and, and we know where people are building houses right now. We need, we definitely need ORED to forecast long-term growth trends and, and where things will be in five or ten years. But where we have real problems right now or in the next two years, I think, I think we could have some discussions about that. That new, undesignated school, whether it's a middle school or an elementary school, we could, we could talk about how that might impact some of our headlines right now. Also, Mr. Myers, you mentioned you'd hate to build a new school somewhere we didn't need it. I do not disagree, but you don't always have to build a, a new school if we have campuses that can handle additional growth. Then, then that's something that perhaps we can give relief to some of these campuses, especially at the middle school or the high school level. If we could move forward additional classroom or campus construction in those areas, especially since instructionally, Dr. Folger, we are still using nineteen forty's facilities for some fairly advanced things in science and STEM programs that would probably benefit from, from some new spaces, letting those older spaces go toward perhaps instruction that doesn't need quite the same level of technology or support. So, new, new schools, going to have to do it. But wing expansions on existing campuses where the core will, will handle it, we should, we should certainly be looking at that as well. I know we are. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
And if we have the, if the veto, the governor's veto on the budget is overridden in the Senate, I believe the budget does accommodate us with another twenty-some million dollars for a new school that was not programmed into our CIP at this point, so.
Also in that discussion, and I've said this before, and before we start adding wings and exceeding core capacity, we need to have the discussion, how large should a school be? I know before us, before I got on the board, we came in at a number where is an elementary school, let's say eight hundred or so. Middle school, a thousand, high school, whatever, how it impacts instruction, how it impacts the flow of that school. You get a school in Jacksonville High, Brad, you were at Jacksonville High, what, seventeen hundred, eighteen hundred?
About fifteen.
Something like that.
Inflation.
But even with fifteen hundred, it was about as large, if not larger, than the community to college. When does a school get too big? When I hear from folks from the north, when my high school had twenty-five hundred kids, their high schools in Wake County, Greensboro, twenty-five, twenty-eight hundred kids, that's great. They're all playing five-a football or something like that. The band's got to be six hundred. But when does it come, a school get too darn big? And we lose focus of why we're putting those kids in that building. So, I would like for that to be part of the discussion too.
Okay, well, we have a motion and a second and we've had some discussion. Maybe it wasn't always related exactly to the timeline that Steve's presented, but that is the motion to allow Steve to, to approve the timeline and the direction that he has given us today. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we will tentatively, why don't we, since there seems to be the interest in us meeting prior to the ORED study, why don't we tentatively try to set something in early December, which would give Steve some time to get some information as well as we might know some more from the base front as well? Is that okay with everybody? Good. The last item is, actually, Bob has already introduced it, is, is about the military growth and the municipal impacts. And he and I did attend the meeting the other day and it was very, it was full of a lot of data and if you couldn't attend, it'd be nice if we could get that PowerPoint and you could see the data. In fact, I did, I think they did say they would make that available, if I'm not mistaken. But the big thing for us was that there will be seven hundred more troops coming in within a five-year period. And Bob raised the question, you know, about how is that going to affect us? You know, it's a really big, if every one of those military people, and they're going to be older with families, they'll be buying homes out here, how are we going to meet that? We're not the only one who thinks that same thing. The housing market does too. So, we're going to have to be aware that that is coming our way and five years is tomorrow in our time when you think about what we have to plan for. The other thing that they, they shared was the amount of construction that they're doing and they're going to tear down, if they haven't already, three hundred and thirty-one homes and they're not building any more homes on base. Is that correct, Bob?
I believe that's what they said.
And so, those people are going to have to come out here to live, which will not only be an economic impact to the whole county, but also be a challenge for us. And I, I said yesterday at economic development that it's really a bittersweetness when you think about it because it's a challenge, but it's also a, a time for opportunities. And I can only imagine what it would be if half the base left, what it would be economically to our, our community entirely.
Two thousand and one.
Two thousand and one. That's right.
I think it was.
Desert Storm.
Desert Storm.
And you could ride anywhere without seeing a car in the morning. You didn't have a, you could get your coffee in the morning quicker, that's for sure because there was not a line. But I, I wanted you to know that because there'll be other information coming. I know that they've turned, all their building projects are being turned over to, what's the acronym? Is it NAV, NAVAC? Is that what it is, Bob?
Naval Facilities.
Yeah, I think they're handling all of that. The money is routed through them, but they're going to be building and doing a lot of construction over there. Yeah, NAVAC. So, I know it's going to impact us one way or the other. The thing is, is how are we going to address it? And I think today, we've made a commitment that we want to look to see what we can do right now with our overcrowdedness in our existing facilities. And like Steve said, we may need those extra six classrooms being built on these new facilities that are coming on board. And Bob, do you want to say anything else about that?
We, we heard a lot and one of the reasons that we're having a huge buildup is that they're moving the west coast forests of Marsoc eastward here. And they've told us that it's going to be about seven hundred people over a five-year period that will be coming in. It'll be scattered in. And when I raised the question how that's going to impact, is they told us that it will be troops that are not younger, more mature troops is what they basically said. So, if you just figure seven hundred and each one of those people had one student, that's already two schools for us under the normal area that we've got there. So, that's not the only thing that's going to happen. We've got a lot of people that are coming in to do all that construction. So, these construction people, although they're talking about building a tent city on, on the base to accommodate a lot of them, there will be several that will come over there that won't want to live in that tent city. And if they're coming here on a two or three-year construction project, they're going to bring their families here. So, that's going to impact us outside of that seven hundred people that will be in the troop movement. So, you know, it's just one of those things we're going to have to roll with, you know? There's no way around it. We can't control what they do. We have to be reactionary. Unfortunately, they can react a lot quicker than we can. I mentioned earlier that it takes us two years from the time we award a contract to get the school open and we're looking at next five to ten years as part of that process. So, we're already behind the curve. It's all we can do.
I have one other thing. I didn't write it, I talked to Barry about it and I think I mentioned a couple of you. In the area where the new Dixon school is going to be built, that area, part of it, the neighborhoods that are out there have been annexed by the city of Holly Ridge and they provide sanitation. They also provide police patrol out there. Used to, the city could annex us, but now the new law is, isn't it Alec, that we have to ask to be annexed? And I throw that out not as an action item or anything, but that it's something that you may want to consider so that when we come back, we can have a discussion. There are probably some good advantages to doing that and the sooner we do it, the, probably the better. But one, it would give us some added police presence in that area. It would give us the sanitation. There's no tax base that we pay on or anything, so it's not anything that's really going to help them financially, but it would probably help them in grants or something. I don't know, Jeff, you would know more about that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think there's, there's no disadvantage to the school system. The school system, as a government entity, doesn't pay property taxes, so we wouldn't have increased expense. It would be of benefit to the town and I'm, I'm speaking as, as a former Holly Ridge town manager now. You know, all small municipalities, they, you know, they, they certainly seek to market themselves. They certainly seek to, to tell, you know, tell prospective residents that their town is great. Holly Ridge being able to truthfully say there's an elementary school inside the municipal limits of, of town would be of benefit, I believe, to the town. And it's in close proximity to the town as it is, to other areas that have been annexed by the town. And I believe it would only benefit one of our communities that certainly supports the school system and we have a whole lot of kids that already live in Holly Ridge. So, I, I, I don't see any negative from it and at such a time that the, the board felt so inclined, I would, I would love to be the one to make that motion.
So, if you, as you go home this evening, think about that because it's something that, that I think we're going to have to make a decision on. And plus, I think, if I'm not mistaken, they own land that's adjacent to our land and behind it as well. And I asked the question to the mayor the other day of Holly Ridge, how did they get the, the buildings, the building areas in there, those housing developments? She said they came to us and asked. So, I just thought I'd throw that out today as food for thought.
Apparently, I think it's important, the message that we relay to the people we talk with, the clubs that we belong to, the churches we go to, because we've heard from others that children may be a problem or a burden. That just is not the case and we need to be positive. I don't look at it as a problem with these folks coming. It is a challenge and we need to make it a positive challenge. So, let's be careful what we say to our publics out there. They're going to be here. I'll tell you why. If it were going the other way and they were leaving, some of us would not be sitting here with a job. We're doing what we do. So, let's be sure that we're positive about that. These are children and we're building the future. We need to be positive about it. It is a challenge and we can handle it.
And that's so true. We can do it and, and you know, the education, I think, I think Jeff has talked about this one night at our board meeting, education is an economic driver and I think we've proven that we are part of that. Barry, have any comments?
Just wanted to recognize Donna Grady back here. She's one of our military liaison. We get a lot of this information from that group, so thank her for being here.
And we have Janet Bowen with the chamber and she's in charge of governmental affairs.
And Jeanette Pippin.
And Jeanette Pip, Pippin, our favorite news reporter. Anybody have any comments? Hearing none? May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Stack it?
Stack it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go ahead.